Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting, May 2, 2024. Please join me in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law, knows that 2024 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the township's civic clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please?
Mr. Vander Vliet, Mr. Radowitz, and Mr. Scobar are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Mr. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Depp?
Here.
Mr. Depp?
President?
Mayor Chigrelly?
Here.
Vice Chair Peasen?
Here.
Chair Saraji? Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
And myself and the videographer here.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Moving along, we do not have any meeting minutes for consideration. We do have a resolution for consideration, Toll Brothers, Inc., RBJ/Enclave, file 21-PB-10-S/MSP/SP, and this was an extension for this year. So with that, may I have a motion to approve?
Three members eligible, yourself, the deputy mayor, and the committee man.
So moved. Second.
Okay, that was easy. Any comments from the dais? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chigrelly?
Yes.
Chair Saraji?
Yes. Okay, we do not have planning board business nor considerations of ordinances, so I will now move to business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. If you'd like to provide any comments to the board, please come up, state your name and address for the record, please. And again, as I've said in the past, please refrain from any comments regarding planning board, that's what I was going to say, regarding warehouses, whether directly or indirectly.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. I just want to state, I did not receive proper notice for this, in regard to this application, because I received via U.S.-certified mail, a flyer, a regular flyer with no explanation of what it's for, why it was sent to me, and then, within three weeks afterwards, I got another flyer, again, in regard to Block 86, Lot 21.02, with no explanation as to why it was sent to me, or why it was sent via U.S.-certified mail with a return receipt requested, and each of the flyers had different information in it. So I don't know what that was all about. And as a property owner, within 200 feet of this property, I should have been given proper notice in accordance with the municipal land use law. In addition, this meeting does not have documents that are germane to this application, and that would be the settlement agreement that involves the Glengarry property, the concept plan that was discussed last year by the Hillsborough Township-
Chairman, these comments are for things not on tonight's agenda. This meeting is on tonight's agenda. This is not the time to air this conversation. That'll be time when the application starts.
You want to have a meeting when you haven't provided the proper documents.
This is not time for that application.
There's no LOI for this either.
But if you have some other comments-
I'm objecting to the fact that I, as a property owner, did not receive proper notice.
Well, when we get to the application, we will ask the applicant's attorney if they provided proper notice when we get to that part of the meeting.
Okay, I had sent a letter to the attorney, I sent a letter to Mr. Coys, I sent a letter to the mayor. No one responded to me prior to this meeting, and I had sent that out, no one responded prior to this meeting. My question's, the makeup of the planning board, is everyone a volunteer?
Yes.
Okay.
Except the professionals.
Except for Attorney Bernstein.
Our engineer, our sonographer, videographer, and our planner.
Okay, but the board members are, do the board members have to be bonded?
No.
No? Okay. Did each board member take an oath of office?
Yes.
Okay, and did each board member take that course that's required within a certain amount of time, each one?
I don't keep those records, but would be confident that if anyone was coming close to their due date, Mr. Coys's office would be reaching out.
Any new members have a certain period of time? I believe it's within a year?
One year.
One year to be able to take it.
Okay, so is there a record of who has been on the board more than a year, and if they have taken that required course training? Is there a record?
We have copies of, we have documents that show who has taken the course, if that's your question.
Yes, yes, so you would have that where in the planning department?
We do.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We gotta head shake now. So we are gonna move on to this evening's public hearing on our one application. Change of pace, and it's not a warehouse. So Up Sherman Track, Phase 2, M&amp;M at Camplain Road LLC, file number 23-PB-18-MSP, time of decision of May 17 of this year, Block 86, Lot 21.02, formerly Block 86, Lot 21, Camplain Road, it's also known as Estelle Street, per the Hillsborough Township tax records. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval and waivers to construct a residential development consisting of 88 affordable town home units with stormwater, roadways, landscaping, lighting, and associated improvements. For a property governed by the Sherman Redevelopment Plan, which was adopted March 13, 2019, also noted, I guess, kind of just for the record, they were to be here, or they were here, March 7 of this year, but that was adjourned, April 11, that was adjourned. There was a environmental commission review on February 26 of this year, and then, trying to think, what else? That's it. So I am gonna turn it over to the attorney.
Thank you. Irina Algart from Weingarten Law Firm on behalf of-
Sorry, get closer to the mic and make sure it's on. Should be a green light on the base.
It doesn't help that my allergies are acting up too. Irina Algart from Weingarten Law Firm on behalf of M&amp;M at Camplain Road LLC. Before I get started, I just wanted to give you the, just hand over some of the exhibits, just so you have it in file, and then also we have handouts if you want.
Yeah, to David?
Yes, I can. Okay. Thank you. I don't know if anybody wants individual handouts.
Yeah, we can take them, because they've already been provided.
Can you please provide one for anyone in the public, too, if they might want one?
No. We'll mark them during the-
Okay. It's okay, I can start, and we'll get it connected.
Oh, yes, I'm coming. That'll be great.
That's for the files. That's for the files.
Yeah.
Those are the hard copies, that's the electronic copy.
It's all over there. Oh, got it. Right.
You know what, I'll take one, I'll take one. I'm somewhat fine.
Huh?
Take a chair.
Take a chair.
I have a few more. Any more, Irina? Two, two more?
Yeah. Do you want to try my computer? Thank you.
Are there enough out there for the public?
Just make sure everyone out there's got one.
You can give me another copy.
Yes.
I've raised the volume. I think we're ready to start. for the 88 affordable units on parcel 2, which is part of the town's fair share plan, as well as consistent with the redevelopment plan. Before I actually get started, I would ask Mr. Bernstein to take jurisdiction with regard to the notices. We've gone through them, I believe we've complied with what the law provides, so.
That's my review of it, that there has been compliance on the notice issue. I know others may disagree, but that's our review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the plan that we have before you, it's a plan that's been vetted over and over again several times. We're here with what's relatively conforming with the redevelopment plan, as well as the concept plan that has been approved by the town council. We are asking for a few waivers, but as we all know, that this has undergone pretty public process already, before we've even gotten before the board at this point. We are the designated redeveloper of the site, and it's been established as an area in need of rehabilitation. We did enter into a 2019 settlement agreement, and this is an inclusionary development and affiliated with the Glengarry site. So tonight, we have with us Bill Parkill, as well as Andrew Visu, who's with Stonefield. He's our traffic engineer, we have Christine Caphone, who's gonna be doing our planning testimony, and we have Ron Allmack, who is the director of development for M&amp;M at Camplain Road. Without any further ado, if I could have Mr. Parkill-
Right here.
-sworn in.
Sure. William, initial J, last name Parkill, P-A-R-K-H-I-L-L. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And if you could go through your education background, and as well as your licensing and qualifications?
Sure. I have a bachelor's in science and engineering from the College of New Jersey, I graduated in 2003. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2008. I've appeared in front of many of boards, I have not went back and counted them over the years. Throughout the state of New Jersey, I've been qualified in front of the Spirit Court of New Jersey, as well as a professional in the field of civil engineering. I've testified on residential, including 100% affordable housing communities such as this one.
Okay, any gaps or suspensions?
No gaps, no suspensions, just completed all my continuing educations, because they were due at the end of last month.
Okay, any objections? Hearing none, we accept, please continue.
Thank you.
So since you've prepared the site plan, if you could go through a little bit about the development, just to walk the board through some of the specifics.
This is weird, I'm usually standing, pointing at a board, so it might be a little rusty. So as everyone's aware, we're here with an application for preliminary and final major site plan for the redevelopment area known as the Sherman Track, Phase 2. The subject application is seeking the approval to construct 88 affordable residential units in 11 buildings, each building having eight units. The site is located with primary access, you know, as proposed on our plan, along Camplain Road, directly to the west of Phase 1, which has recently been constructed. On the screen, you can see the aerial is a little outdated, it's while Phase 1 is under construction, which is sort of the light brown area you see to the top of the rendering, which would be east of our project, north is to the left for everyone's knowledge moving forward. So as I stated, this is, you know, Phase 2 of a two-phase redevelopment on land owned by the township. At one point, I know that Phase 1 is no longer owned by the township, Phase 1, my understanding, is recently completed construction, that is also 88 100% affordable residential units. Surrounding our area are various uses, directly across the street, is a recycling operation and a car auction facility of some sort, with some single-family residential homes also along Camplain. To the west, there are several streets, sort of small residential neighborhood streets that have single-family residential houses on those as well. To the rear of our property is, which would be the south, is the Royce Brook, which is a stream, and directly to the east, as I said, is Phase 1 of Sherman Track. I keep saying Phase 1 and Phase 2, this property was subdivided during Phase 1 to create two equal-sized lots, the lots subject to this application is Block 86, Lot 21.02, which is 31.3 acres, that's the area you see outlined in the white. I'm gonna jump to our second exhibit, if I can do this cleanly.
Eric, should we be marking these, A1, and this is A2?
Let's mark A1 as the overall aerial exhibit, Sherman Track, Phase 1, front page from Mid-Atlantic Engineering, dated May 2, 2024.
Page 2.
A1? Page 2, pardon me, excuse me. A2 will be the rendered site plan, Sherman Track, Phase 2, Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners, last dated, appears, correct me if I'm wrong, April 10, 2024?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So this rendered site plan is basically a zoomed-in view of what we saw on A1 to show the limits of the proposed community. As I said, you know, the surrounding uses I went through, but, you know, directly adjacent to this, you know, the limits of disturbance of this community, it's primarily wooded, right? The site is primarily wooded as it is, and this area will be cleared for the construction of these 88 affordable housing units. The project is requesting approval for singular vehicular access coming off of Camplain Road. Our access does not actually, there's a portion between Camplain and our frontage, which is an existing 60-foot-wide township right-of-way known as Buffalo Road, I believe. So our access will stretch from Camplain into our development, down that small stretch of Buffalo, to the private property of this project, and into our community. So that's the proposed vehicular access to the project. There's also secondary fire access, proposed at the sort of bottom right of my image, which would be directly off the end of Jackson Street. The intent there is not that that's an improved pave access, but that's a, you know, grass paved, stabilized access for emergency vehicles. We would not envision that to be a primary route of vehicular circulation for the residents of the community. Internal circulation, you know, as I stated, 11 buildings, sort of, there's eight along a, you know, sort of neighborhood boulevard road that bisects the center here. The intention, you know, with that, it's a very similar design as to what Phase 1 was approved as, where you're providing on-street parking, out front of the units, sort of to give it a little bit of a neighborhood or community feel, with full circulation around the rear of these units, where there's, you know, a little more substantial parking, you know, parking areas, which are perpendicular parking areas. There are no dead ends on-site that exist, so, you know, circulation for residents will be convenient. In addition, you know, sort of to the parking and buildings, in the bottom-left corner of my screen here, there's an area where there's a proposed gazebo and tot lot, tot lot is fenced in with a four-foot-high fence, and adjacent to that, there's a, you know, small area that we're clearing to provide a little bit of, you know, passive recreation space. In addition to there, there's a little bit of additional clearing that's happening behind buildings. I believe that's 10, 10 and 11, sorry, I can't quite read it on the screen, to, again, provide for the same opportunity of, you know, just some cleared space that's not, you know, all wooded like the rest of the surrounding area for some, you know, passive rec area. Overall, the intent of the design of the site was to comply with, you know, both the redevelopment plan and residential site improvement standards, residential site improvement standards do govern all residential development in the state of New Jersey, and I think that ties to one of the waivers that we are requesting, where the redevelopment plan required or requested two points of access to the site. We are only proposing one point of access coming from Camplain. While that's a waiver from the redevelopment plan, we are confident that, as proposed, we are compliant with residential site improvement standards for access to our site. There's also pedestrian circulation provided within our development, along the internal roads and parking areas to each unit. I skipped over total parking spaces. As I said, this is 88 units total, it's a mixture of 16 one-bedroom units, 52 two-bedroom units, and 23 bedroom units. RSIS requires 175 parking spaces. The current plan proposes 201 parking spaces, so we are in exceedance of the residential site improvement standard parking requirement. As part of those 201 parking spaces, there are 11 handicap-accessible parking spaces provided, as well as proposed compliance with the New Jersey EV regulations. 15% of the 201, 31 spaces will be make-ready, with 1/3 happening at time of construction, 1/3 after three years, and 1/3 after six years, so we will be compliant with that regulation as well. The buildings are serviced by private, or by internal trash collection, there are three separate trash enclosures, sort of spread throughout the site for equally convenient access for all residents, also, you know, put in a place where hopefully not impactful to a resident's, you know, day-to-day quiet life enjoyment, you don't want to put one of those right outside someone's window or something like that. So it's always tricky to locate those, but we try to do our best to get them in a spot where they're both convenient and not a nuisance to residents. All buildings will be serviced by public water and sewer. Public sewer exists to the rear of our property, running along Royce Brook, which was connected in association with the construction of Phase 1. I'm envisioning Phase 2 tying into that sanitary sewer system. Water service will be obtained off of Camplain Road, coming into the development.
And are you aware whether we received our will-serv letters?
We have, we have received will-serv letters for both water and sewer for this development.
Eric, can you put the mic closer to you, so?
Sorry about that.
There you go, thank you.
I just asked whether we had received our will-serv letters for sewer and water.
Yes, we have received will-serv letters for both water and sewer for this community.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna go to A3.
I'm remarking A3, if you can identify it for the record.
I'm gonna have to zoom in here.
You can see it.
A3 is a stream corridor averaging plan with a date last revised February 13, 2024, prepared by Mid-Atlantic. So what this plan illustrates are the environmental constraints that, you know, impact the developability of this parcel. I think you heard when I said earlier that Sherman, Phase 1 and Phase 2 was one track that was subdivided into two equal-sized parcels. I think that would indicate sort of equal developability of both parcels, and I think it's important to point out that while, you know, the overall parcel sizes are both 31-odd acres, the area that is available for development are unencumbered by NJDEP flood hazard regulation, NJDEP freshwater wetlands areas, the township's stream corridor ordinance, and Delaware Raritan Canal Commission's regulated areas are greatly different. So, you know, like I said, Phase 1 is also a 31-acre parcel, and had just over 18 acres of developable land outside of those restrictions. For Phase 2, which is also the same number of units, the same size lot, has about half that, I think we are about nine acres of unconstrained area on this site. So, you know, while face value, 231-acre lots to be developed with the same number of residential units should be, you know, a sort of a very simple task, the reason I go through that is the waivers we are seeking here are related to our impacts to the township's stream corridor issue, or issue, I'm sorry, it's not an issue, stream corridor ordinance. The township has an ordinance that, well, DEP regulates waters of New Jersey, and they place riparian buffers on waters. I think you heard when I said earlier that Sherman, Phase 1 and Phase 2 was one tract that was subdivided into two equal-sized parcels. I think that would indicate sort of equal developability of both parcels. And I think it's important to point out that while the overall parcel sizes are both 31 odd acres, the area that is available for development are unencumbered by NJDEP flood hazard regulation, NJDEP freshwater wetlands areas, the townships' stream corridor ordinance, and Delaware Raritan Canal Commission's regulated areas are greatly different. So like I said, Phase 1 is also a 31-acre parcel and had just over 18 acres of developable land outside of those restrictions. For Phase 2, which is also the same number of units, the same-sized lot, has about half that. I think we are about nine acres of unconstrained area on this site. So while at face value, two 31-acre lots to be developed with the same number of residential units should be a sort of a very simple task, the reason I go through that is the waivers we are seeking here are related to our impacts to the township's stream corridor issue, or issue, I'm sorry, it's not an issue, stream corridor ordinance. The township has an ordinance that, well, DEP regulates waters of New Jersey, and they place riparian buffers on waters. This water that is a drainage, swell, stream, ditch, whatever you want to call it, that sort of originates at the commercial properties across the street from us, does drain less than 50 acres, so it does not have flood hazard area associated with it until it gets sort of to the end of our proposed development. And above that does have a riparian buffer, and that riparian buffer from DEP is 50 feet on each side of that stream. The township's stream corridor ordinance adds an additional 100 feet, for a total of 150 feet, buffer to that stream corridor. So the waivers we're requesting are related to proposed development outside of the limits of the DEP's jurisdiction, but within the limits of the township's stream corridor ordinance jurisdiction. Specifically, we are doing some amount of stream corridor buffer averaging and requesting waivers for construction of our entrance roadway, which is ordinance section 18864D3, lowercase d, which is a waiver requested for the construction of our entrance roadway within the stream corridor area, and 18864D3C, which is a waiver requested to construct our detention basin and related outfall facilities within the stream corridor. Those areas, for clarification, the second one I read, which is the waiver for detention basin and related outfall, is the light-green area on this screen. And then the red area is related to the entrance roadway. The yellow area is related to our proposed parking lot and building, and is compensated for with buffer averaging, both the red area and the light-orange area. So you'll hear more from our planner as to justification of those waivers, but this project is a 100% affordable housing project, which is inherently beneficial use. Deviating from this stream corridor ordinance does provide a net benefit to this project. It enables the site to be developed with the proposed 88 residential units and does not create any negatives to the surrounding residents or community, right? These areas that will be additionally cleared along this stream are all internal to this development. Adequate screening will exist surrounding the entire development. So this is really only impacting this proposed community.
Mr. Chairman, let the record reflect, Mr. Scoball arrived at 7:38.
Thank you. I'm going to jump back to A2 and hit my favorite topic, stormwater management. So this site, as I stated, is encumbered by Delaware Raritan Canal Commission, NJDEP, Township, and Soil Conservation District. So there will be four different agencies that will review this stormwater management. Our stormwater has been designed to comply with the current stormwater manager regulations, which include providing green infrastructure, providing water quality and water quantity reductions. Water quantity reductions are now required not only to be provided on the latest rainfall data, but also projected rainfall data for the year 2100. So this is a robust stormwater management design, our system, that I'm sure the board has recently seen and will continue to see on all applications. We are addressing that through the construction of three small-scale by-retention basins there, the darker-green areas to the top of the page, and then one to the bottom-right of the page. And that is how we are handling the stormwater management on-site. Site lighting is provided via 27 pole-mounted light fixtures at a height of 15 feet and So I think that concludes everything I was hoping to convey to the board, and I don't think I have anything further.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we move over to the review letter that we received today from the engineer? And why don't we go through what? Oh. We're going to move over to the review letter that we received today from the engineer. It's dated May 2nd, 2024, and we'll go through the letter in terms of just the items that we're not going to comply with, or we can't comply with, or we'll have our discussions with regard to each item. I'm going to turn to page 2, under Planning and Zoning. Number 1, if you could take a look at that and look at the feasibility and discuss whether it's feasible for there to be a connection to Sunnymead Road through Adams.
Yeah, so as I testified, our proposed access is across Camplain, and I probably glazed over it and should not have quite as much as I did. That access to Camplain does cross that tributary to Royce Brook, which ends up at the commercial properties across the street from us. So there is a stream crossing that is happening in order to obtain access to Camplain. That stream crossing is governed by NJDEP. It will be a general permit. We are within the requirements of that general permit, and we'll obtain that permit from NJDEP to permit that stream crossing. That access is a 24-foot-wide, two-way access and does comply with residential site improvement standards. We have not made any substantial review of what a access off of Adams Street would look like at this time. So I think our current proposal is to connect to Camplain Road.
All right, we're going to move over to number 2, which deals with sidewalks from the subject tract along Jackson Street connecting to Sunnymead Elementary School. I think that was the comment here, so.
Yeah, and I think there's a few comments about sidewalks. I testified to our internal sidewalk network that exists, but there's this comment and another one about connectivity to Camplain with a sidewalk as well. This is an area of town that sidewalks don't exist in any measurable fashion. The request to put sidewalk out Jackson Road to Sunnymead, and my concern is that you're creating a dangerous condition. Sunnymead does not have sidewalks, does not have walkable shoulders. While I know the school is just adjacent to where Jackson is, the school does not have sidewalks in front of it, the school does not have sidewalks leading off of Sunnymead into the parking areas. Our concern and our reason for not providing the sidewalks, we're concerned that we're leading people to an unsafe condition, right? We're providing a sidewalk to a point where they get to Sunnymead and then they're on their own from there. And that does not seem appropriate in this neighborhood.
The next one is with regard to the center roadway that's internal to the buildings. This was, I think, added as a recommendation, and the applicant will consider it. The only thing, the only problem that we have is that we don't want to have this application be delayed, in terms of consideration. If the board is willing to consider that, we're willing to look at it as well, as long as it's something that could be done by the professionals as resolution compliance, if the board is so inclined, as long as it doesn't trigger an amendment to this application. Okay, and with regard to a pedestrian connection to Phase 1, which is under number 4.
Yes, so as I indicated, there's the tributary to Royce Brook that separates both us and Phase 1. We've spoken to the applicant, and such that we're able to permit a pedestrian walk between Phase 1 and 2 through that stream over a culvert. We're not, I don't think this project can support the building of a bridge, but such that we're able to permit that through NJDEP permitting, the applicant is amenable to providing pedestrian connectivity between Phase 1 and Phase 2.
And additionally, we would be willing to do that as long as it's also a resolution compliance item and something that the board is comfortable having the professionals oversee.
Yeah, I'm confident that I can work with Mr. Mahew's office on a solution there through res compliance.
Okay, if you can address on page 5, number 17, with regard to the retaining walls, culvert guardrails shall be adjusted to accommodate a four-foot-wide sidewalk set four-foot off curb line along one side of the proposed entrance drive from Camplain and connecting to the internal walkway.
Yeah, I think similar to our discussion about Jackson Road, Camplain also does not have sidewalks on it, is not a safe condition to discharge pedestrians onto. In addition to that, because we are crossing regulated water there, there are limitations to the total square footage of impact riparian buffer that permitted disturbance for a road crossing is 4,000 square feet, where approximately 3,800 square feet or so, so we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room there to provide additional width for a sidewalk. In addition to my opinion that we would be creating an unsafe condition at Camplain, for note, Phase 1, which is constructed and was approved by this board, also did not provide a sidewalk out to Camplain, I think likely, I don't know for a fact, but I would assume likely for the same reasons.
Okay, and then also on page 5, it's, God bless you. Also on page 5, under Redevelopment Plan, number 3, and it goes on to page 6, and I think you already touched on it as to the reason why we're seeking the waiver for having one access as opposed to two access.
That's correct, I did. Do you need me to go through that again?
I think we're okay. The board has questions, they can, they'll ask you. So, okay, page 6. Number 6, also, if you could just testify with regard to whether you think that that's a waiver or not.
Sure. So the redevelopment plan speaks to required setbacks from streets and required setbacks from off-street parking. In this center boulevard that sort of bisects the site, we have parallel parking located along the street. Our parallel parking located along the street is approximately 14 feet from the proposed buildings. I think the question here is sort of asking for, deferring to the planner, as to whether the 10-foot setback from off-street parking or 20-foot setback from internal streets applies to the edge of that parking, that parallel parking. From the carway of the street, we are greater than 20 feet. From the edge of the parking, we are greater than 10 feet. Our opinion is that there's not a waiver required.
Okay.
And if my office and Mr. Mahew's office work together to eliminate that boulevard, if the board desires and thinks that's an improvement, that one item of relief would go away, or if it is relief.
And we'll defer to the planner, and whatever he decides, if that is a waiver, we're willing to testify as to the waiver request, but we don't feel that it is a waiver, because it's considered off-street parking. And we satisfy it then, so. With regard to, on page 8, number 4, we will provide additional testimony with regard to that item. That's not for Mr. Parkhill to testify to, but I just want to put a placeholder there. If you could just speak to the stormwater management, just so we're clear on that.
Yeah, so there are a handful of comments regarding stormwater management. As I said, this project is, will be compliant with the new stormwater manager regulations, will be reviewed by Mr. Mahew's office, as well as NJDEP and DRCC. We are confident that we will comply with all applicable stormwater management regulations.
And with regard to page 16, with regard to the comments with water main. I believe we're going to comply with all those, or?
Sorry, I'm not turning pages fast enough.
If you want to go through each one and?
Yes, we are complying with all of those comments on page 16.
Okay, page 17, under Stream Corridor. You testified already to that, so I think there's anything further, right? And with regard to the waivers, we're going to have our planner address items number 2 and 3 there. And I think that that should address everything in this.
That's correct.
Letter. I have no further questions if the board or the professionals have any further questions.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I only need to touch upon the items that the applicant has discussed. I'm assuming the items that we didn't discuss, they're going to be addressed.
That's correct.
I'm not sure how much I need to add to, under the Planning and Zoning comment, number 1, is where we discussed the option of accessing the site off Adams Street. I think our comment stands on its own, if any of the board members later had questions for us. Under comment number 2, I understand the applicant's concern about creating an attractive nuisance, I think is the term utilized. So if sidewalk was begun but isn't completed, are you leading pedestrians, and especially children, into a dangerous situation? I think our office simply is suggesting that that's already being created. Near the emergency access, there is a proposed sidewalk that dead-ends at the end of Jackson. And we just would like the board to consider, will that attract pedestrians who then start going down Jackson and there's no place to end up? So we think the board should consider whether a complete, safe pedestrian pathway is constructed to the school. Item 3, I think speaks on its own. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board. As I understand, the applicant's agreeing to eliminate the center roadway if it has no delay. Now, I don't know what's considered a delay, but as an engineer, to me, it's a very, very simple revision.
I appreciate that, yeah.
It's, I can't speak for the actual design engineer, and Mr. Parkhill may look for a large change order with his client to redo that, so I shouldn't undercut him. But overall, it's not impacting the layout of the site. And if I can ask a question, would you agree that eliminating the center roadway does not impact emergency access capabilities?
It would not impact emergency access capabilities.
And in my look at the drawings, it doesn't have a major impact on the way the site the site is serviced with electric, gas, sanitary, water. There would be no major changes to any of the service utilities, as I understand it. So to me, and I'd be happy to answer questions from the board, it's a huge savings in impervious cover, which is a positive to stormwater management. It's a huge savings in potential construction costs, which would be a great benefit to the applicant. And I think it would be a huge benefit to the ultimate homeowners in this area, creating a, an attractive landscaped area instead of a very wide impervious. It's not just a normal street. Because of the way it's designed, it's actually 62 feet from curb to curb. And I think we're in a suburban area, we're used to looking at a 30-foot, let's say, strip of roadway and sidewalk.
And we would certainly consider that as, as long as the board is comfortable doing it through resolution compliance, and as long as you're comfortable having it done through resolution compliance as well. It sounds, you know, that that's something that we would certainly consider, but again, we don't want it to actually spur anything that requires an amendment, let's say, to any of the, whether it's the redevelopment plan, as long as it's consistent with the redevelopment plan, as long as it's consistent with the town council's approval of the concept plan, and, you know, as long as the board is comfortable with that, then we're comfortable doing it on resolution compliance.
Well, I can't speak to the board.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm, I'm just...
And I can't speak for Mr. Coys, but we have had conversations, and I believe, without putting words in his mouth, this would not violate any of the redevelopment plan criteria. The last comment under planning and zoning was number four, and I, as I understand it, you're agreeing to connect the Phase One to Phase Two with a simple culvert or something that's appropriate for stormwater flow?
Yes.
Okay.
With the condition that DEP is on board with that as well, if we can, as long as we can get our permitting in place, and as well as if we could also have it as part of resolution compliance. So in other words, we don't have to, you know, come back just for that purpose to redo the plans. Obviously, we'll do it as resolution compliance.
Again, I can't, I can't speak for how the board wants to handle it. And Mr. Parkhill, in your opinion, do you see any potential denial of the general permit from the DEP?
No, there's a general permit for pedestrian walkway across a water feature. I think we could comply with the maximum disturbance areas and achieve that, so, such that, you know, DEP approves that under the, you know, conditions of that general permit, we're willing to provide that.
I didn't hear any discussion on page four about our suggested roadway improvements to Camplain. If the entrance is going to stay on Camplain Road, we had concerns with the intersection. There currently are not any improvements proposed. You skipped over that. Are you leaving that for your traffic engineer to discuss?
Yes.
I'll leave it till then as well.
Okay.
On page five, you touched upon the item 17, where we suggested if the access is going to stay out to Camplain Road, we think it's a positive to add sidewalks along the We understand the DEP has general permits for stream crossings, and those general permits set square foot disturbance limits. We would, if it's the board's desire to have a sidewalk, we'd be, I think we could work with the applicant on how to make that crossing feasible. Sometimes in those situations, the sidewalk has to be butt up to the curb. I understand there's only, based on your current plan, there's like 200 square feet left.
Yep.
But I would ask that we at least consider if that access maintained there, we at least, and it's up to the board again, if they desire to have that pedestrian connectivity, that we take a look at that crossing. On page six, item six, we, you talked about the setbacks from parking versus setbacks from streets. I also defer to Mr. Coys. We've had conversations, and I think he has some opinions on the appropriate setback, so I will defer to him. But I agree that if the center roadway is eliminated, that's eliminating those setback issues along those buildings. Skipping ahead to page nine on stormwater management, I think there's a lot of technical issues that our offices can work out. I'm assuming you agree. The one item I just wanted to get on the record is it's possible that this site, it's currently mapped as hydrologic sea soils, and the few test pits that were performed indicate it may be desoils. Our office at this time is not satisfied that enough testing has been performed, nor has enough testing been distributed around the site. The testing has currently been centered only on the lower areas where the basins are proposed. What we want to make clear is that the applicant would agree to do additional testing, distribute it in other areas of the site as appropriate, and let our office witness some of the testing.
Yeah, so if we seek to reclassify the site as desoils, the BMP has prescriptive measures of number of test pits and locations, we will comply with the requirements of the BMP for the testing. Happy to have your office witness that and work through that, both with your office and, you know, through the DEP and our permitting there as well.
And if it turns out that center roadway is eliminated between the buildings, opens up a very large landscape area, it's one of the higher areas on site, which may have less environmental restrictions, would your office entertain some small fire retention or BMPs if it turns out that the testing is positive in those areas?
Yes, we would.
Okay. Do you know what size the water main is on Camplain Road?
In my preparation, I meant to go back and look at that email, and I did not, so I do not know offhand.
Okay. And I think it's, your planner will address, the township has certain conditions to grant waivers in stream corridor, and I guess as our standard planner will address those.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all I have for engineering issues, but I'd be happy to, I kind of skipped the whole, the whole accessory, which could be discussed later at the end of all the testimony, or at any time that anybody had any questions.
I just had a question, Mark. We could go back to number three with the proposal of the center roadway. So I guess that would eliminate what approximately, what, 30 parking spots? And I see in here that they could be relocated to the ends of the Loop Road. Where is the Loop Road, or where, would all 30 go there, or would there just be a small number?
So the Loop Road is on the top of the drawing and the bottom of the drawing, which is east and west of the site, and it continues along the south. So that's what I think Mr. Parkhill and most people would call, that's the Loop Road.
Correct.
And this is the center.
Yes.
If we close off the center on both ends, you would be able to add some parallel parking on this end.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, thank you. Perpendicular parking, which already exists, you would just add more.
Okay.
And you could do the same thing on the northern side of the property. It would mirror what it looks like down here, see how it looks like on the south end, it looks like a parking lot.
Yes.
You don't need a full parking lot, you could just put parking on one side of the Loop Road, and you'd more than make up. Because I think it's important to maintain the amount.
So you'd still maintain that you'd still have the same 30, just in different locations, then? I guess, okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
Would you help widen the Loop Road?
Yeah. You, that's a fantastic question. You would all, all you'd have to do is extend the Loop Road before it makes this 90-degree turn here, you'd have to extend it the length of a parking space, which is 18 feet, so that we can keep the park, parking spot here, 20 feet off of the building. So you're adding about 18 feet of paving here and 80 feet of paving here, which are eliminating 500 feet.
The parking could be 10 feet off the building instead of 20, so maybe we all have to move it 10 feet instead of 18. I stand corrected.
If I could ask a question, I'm assuming we agree to create the, I'll say, the green space between the buildings. I think it would make sense to add a sidewalk in there so that people could traverse from one end to the other without walking through grass, if a meandering path of some sort. And also landscaping to prevent a large, single green space, maybe some, if we're going to put in some BMPs and some different landscape features there to kind of create that more park-like feel, as opposed to just big, open green space.
Yes, we would agree and comply with that request.
And my second question, I'm not sure if you, I mean, Mark, are you, are you happy with the proposed water retention, detention plans as far as flow, et cetera, that is proposed?
Well, you know, I'm saving comments until additional testing is performed. Currently, if it continues down the path of claiming all the soils are desoils, what that does is eliminate the need, or I'll say eliminates the requirement for the applicant to recharge any stormwater, which I think the board understands our office's concern with not recharging. And so we've had discussions, and in my opinion, even if the soils are reclassified as desoils, in order to get DEP permits and Delaware Raritan and Canal Commission permits, I would like the board to support our office's request to do something above and beyond that, to do some recharge on the site. And in my opinion, there are opportunities to do that. One area is in the fire retention basins, you could cap the underdrain and allow the basins to infiltrate as, now, if five or 10 years from now, it's not working, you have the underdrain there, and you'd simply take the cap off on the outlet structure if you find that it's not functioning properly. And I've discussed that with Mr. Parker, I don't know if he's had a chance to talk to his applicant, but it's not, it's not a significant cost difference to the project, it's simply giving the ground an opportunity to recharge where it can.
Oh, my second question is, let's assume the road goes to Camplain Road across the river, or creek, whatever you want to call it. Is it significantly high enough to create or eliminate a potential for a flooding area that would choke off the access to that in case of a heavy rainstorm?
I haven't seen calculations on the culvert yet. I'm assuming that that'll, that'll have to meet the DEP criteria, so it would not be able to restrict 100-year flow. And I'm assuming all those would be shared with our office when that design is done.
That's correct. It would have the required freeboard above the future 100-year storm that DEP is now regulating, so it would not provide, it would not, it would not expose the site to any access issues for emergency vehicles during any flooding event.
Okay. So there would be no pooling of water in that area, do you think? I'm just thinking of just a good old winter freeze.
So, you know, the, the road coming in would be elevated, obviously, above the stream there. The drainage area to that stream, as I, as I said, is, I think at the entrance of our site is about 20 acres. It's not a huge drainage area. DEP regulates that crossing, they would make sure that that culvert was sized to adequately flow the 100-year storm so that we weren't impeding or blocking water. So we would not see any icing issues as a, as a potential issue there.
As I said, it's going to go through the DEP for their general permit, and as long as our office is copied, I don't have a concern at this point. We jumped past the part about the basins don't infiltrate, I just want to get on record, that the applicant will agree to go above and beyond and try to infiltrate where it's op, where there's opportunities exist?
Yes, I think, I think we talked about maybe in that, if that center road's eliminated, maybe, you know, one or two small fire retention basins in there.
Or even if one of the currently proposed basins simply capping the underdrain.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Is, again, this is my landscaper talking now, which way does the site pinch and drain? Naturally?
To the Royce Brook, to the rear, you know, a little bit of drainage is going to that tributary, which comes from the commercial properties across the Camplain from us. But for the most part, the entire watershed is going towards the Royce Brook, which would be the south of us or the right on this screen.
So with what the chairman brought about ice, freeze, thaw, melt, et cetera, in these developments, they kind of designed to have a lot of parking spots, but they don't have a lot of spots to push snow when it's, when it snows. And then you have the freeze and thaw. It hasn't been engineered in there, but I don't, I always like to see areas that have areas of piled snow to the, we were the Lailers side of, of the drain, so it doesn't melt across and create a slip and fall situation. So wherever you might allow a cutout in a curb or something to allow them to push the snow out of the pavement into a grass area, so that it melts into the grass as opposed to the sidewalk. I don't know if you've engineered any of that or have thought about that in the past, but when you have a, especially if you're going to eliminate all that area and just have the, the walkway or the driveway around it where it's all parking, they're going to have to put the snow somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we can work with Mr. Mayhew's office and identify some areas. One of the fortunate situations is we are exceeding our parking requirements with 30 extra spaces, even if you do have to utilize a parking space or, or two here or there for snow. I think there, there will be sufficient room on site to accommodate snow plowing.
Okay. Yeah, I feel confident we could work with Mr. Parkhill's office to identify appropriate cuts in the, in the Loop roadway to allow plowing to push the snow off the paving.
Okay. I'm okay for, I'm done for now.
Yeah, no, because I was just going to start to echo what yours, because now I'm looking at the pitch, and I'm just thinking, and when we have this melt-thaw and people got to haul their trash to one of those three locations, we don't have a continuous sidewalk for them to walk around, they're going to be cutting, you know, they got to walk through the parking lot a bit, so I'm not sure how to ensure that, wherever it's going to thaw, that it thaws away and into the grassy area. I don't know what type of pitch that we can do, but...
Yeah, we can, we can look at that with Mr. Mayhew's office.
I had a question. On the access road, how, how wide is that? Is that just enough room for one car each way? Or is there like a little buffer, kind of a shoulder, or? I'm just concerned if somebody does decide to walk to Camplain Road, that they're not walking in the middle of the street.
Sure.
Where a car may end or have accounted for maybe a future sidewalk right-of-way comes a day, whenever that maybe that road does become a complete street.
Yeah, I, I think the answer is that road is 24 feet wide. Your, you know, residential access roads range, you know, I think the smallest that RSIS permits, either 18 or 20 feet, sort of onward from there. There is sufficient room, I think the traffic engineer will testify to, you know, the, the number of trips and the generation. This is a small community, not, you know, cut through traffic, should be very little, you know, simultaneous traffic coming in and out of there. So in the event someone is walking there, I do think there's adequate, adequate room to safely pass.
And is there a, I guess, a school bus stop anywhere designated on there? Maybe I missed it. Where that comes under traffic.
Yeah, the traffic, the traffic engineer will testify to that.
Okay, thank you.
Scorsese. Thank you. Good evening. Before I get into it, were you planning on addressing my report as well? If not, I could just ask some questions based on Mr. Mayhew.
I was not.
Again, I'm just the planner. Just the planner, that's okay. Could you just give further clarification why the choice wasn't made to do the primary connection to the cross-access easement that was provided in Phase One? Because that also would have required crossing, crossing the stream. So instead of connecting to Camplain Road, can you clarify why the applicant didn't pursue the crossing over to the next, you know, Phase One?
Yeah, I, and, you know, I don't know that I'm the best to answer this, but I'll, I'll give it a shot. I think through the process, there was an original overall redevelopment that envisioned, you know, both of these sites connecting, as well as, you know, another access out to Camplain. to Camplain. We had initially explored, you know, both Camplain and the neighboring development and determined under NJDEP flood hazard regulations, we could not accommodate both accesses and wanted to provide access out to the public right-of-way on Camplain, and that's why that decision was made.
So, so the Camplain Road 1 was prioritized over the other connection?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be possible in terms of the rules for NJDEP? Would it be possible, instead of doing the crossing to Camplain Road, to connect into Phase 1? Would that comply with the NJDEP requirements, the clearing limits, et cetera?
I don't know that I can answer you with a definite answer. I would, I would venture, I guess, that it probably could, but I have not explored that to be able to positively answer that for you.
Okay. You had also testified in terms of Phase 1 not having a sidewalk to Camplain Road. I agree with you, that, that is a true statement. But just to bring to the board's attention, Phase 1 does have a sidewalk that connects from Estelle Street to Roosevelt. So it does have a sidewalk that connects to the external network, which is compliant and consistent with the vision of the redevelopment plan. In terms of the agreement of the applicant to, of working to connect the pedestrians from Phase 2 to Phase 1, I know you're addressing Mr. Mayhew's comments, and perhaps you weren't able to look at where that might happen. Were you thinking that that could be accomplished through the cross-access easement? Or some other location?
I think through the cross-access easement.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Just to touch on your one comment about the sidewalk out to Camplain, I think in Phase 1, it appears that sort of preference was given to that connection secondary, not to Camplain, where there's a scattering of sidewalks throughout the neighborhood, but primarily sidewalks don't exist. And I think that was similar to our thought process with, you know, providing a connection of Phase 2 to Jackson, where Jackson doesn't have sidewalks, nor do, you know, the, the majority of those streets there, but providing, providing some pedestrian connection outside without putting people onto Camplain, where we, where we saw sort of an unsafe, attractive nuisance, as Mr. Mayhew called it.
If I could add one thing, I'm not sure it made it to our review letter, but we were talking about the emergency access and the pedestrian connection to Jackson Street. In fact, the exhibit shows, as Mr. Parkhill talked about, and you can see on the plans, it shows, I believe it's like grass pavers, so it looks green.
Yep.
Emergency access and the sidewalk. What you can't tell is these won't actually connect to the, the end of Jackson Street. So if this is going to continue to be the plan, I would suggest to the board that, that the applicant should actually physically connect the emergency access to the end of Jackson Street. Otherwise, you've got a gap for the fire trucks to.
Yeah, I, I think that was our intention, and the drafting didn't quite keep up with the intention, so I apologize. But yes, we will connect to the, to where the asphalt ends on Jackson Street there.
And you would connect the sidewalk that's right alongside?
Yes.
At least to paving?
Yep, to paving.
That's, that's all I had for now.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. Good evening. Can you elaborate on where the pedestrian access is planned to go between Phase 1 and 2? And how will that be constructed?
This shows it the best because the, there's an existing access easement on Phase 1 that is, I don't know if you can see my cursor in this location, and then it would cross at a 90-degree angle across the stream generally to, you know, this area, you know, between these two stormwater basins.
Okay, and how will that, will it be a blacktop paved walkway? Any, any plans for how it might be constructed?
I think it would be a pervious surface walkway, whether it's, you know, wood trip or stone chip or something like that that would allow water to continue to perk and whatever crossing is required at the actual stream itself from DEP, a culvert and, you know, some fill. But that would be the intention, it would not be a concrete or paved sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. And we'll, and as far as continuing on into Phase 1, I know that's not this application, but would it be a continuous path? Would Phase, is Phase 1 going to marry up to this access?
If it's okay, we'd like to, I'd like to have Ron Allin back be sworn in, and he can address that question if that's acceptable.
Do we have any more questions right now?
If there's no other questions, I don't want to.
Then maybe we, what we want to do is open to public.
I can wait.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So may I have a motion to open to public? Want a favor?
Hi.
Okay, if there's anyone in public that would like to question this witness on his testimony, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please. And again, questions on his testimony and his area of expertise.
Okay, my name is David Elliott, 2191 Jackson Street. For reference, I'm Block 114 in the picture on the south side of Jackson adjacent to the property. So these are just questions of what we just talked about.
Correct.
Okay. So we, I'm here with also Block 115, which is the other property adjacent on the north side of Jackson. So we are in agreement with the applicant. We would like no sidewalks on our street. This would be a huge fiscal responsibility as well as snow removal, et cetera, that we'd have to upkeep on Jackson Street. My property alone, I think, is about 237 feet across the front of it, which would be obviously a lot of upkeep. I think my neighbors is over 1,000 feet down Jackson Street. We would request that there be no second access road on Adams or primary access on Adams or Jackson Street, as in some other notes or mentioned by other people here. Primarily, we have kids, children, dogs, pets that play in the area. It would be a big change for us, so we'd like, ask that to be considered as just a primary access through Camplain and emergency access through Jackson. Lastly, in accordance with the emergency access and talking about parking, I would like to request that there would be a, let's see, no parking, no street parking at night enforceable on Jackson Street, so people from buildings, I think, 6 and 7 don't park behind on our street and walk towards the property.
That's a township committee issue.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Now, yeah, the township committee would have to pass no parking ordinance.
We did talk slightly about stormwater management. Just one concern I have is off the back end of my property, so I am completely downgrade of Jackson Street itself. We didn't talk about grading specifically or the grading map. I'm not an engineer, but I did try to read the map myself. In the backside of my property, I think there's a five, six, or seven-foot drop-off within probably about 50 feet of my property, directly onto my property. So we'd request that maybe some type of berm where those plantings be at, so that the property manager can manage the stormwater on their own rather than having a discharge onto my property. So I have, thank you.
Could you clarify what your, either address or lot number is?
It is Block 114, 2191 Jackson Street.
You don't know the lot number?
No, not off the main.
That's okay.
President brought up some grading issues. I don't have that particular area memorized. I'd have to look at it, and then I'm sure Mr. Parkhill can address it.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, one, yes, no, 114, they're 115, so I have two, those two lots right there. Oh, I'm lots 1 and 2, sorry. Yes.
So it's, it's this home on the sort of right side of Jackson on this image, correct?
Correct, yep. I do have one more issue that we discussed. I don't know if it's your area of expertise, but it was access to water and waste management. The only utilities we have on our road is electricity, being that we're so close to the proposed project, we ask that somehow it be extended, water, gas, or whatever is being offered to the apartment complexes somehow offered to Jackson Street as well. Thank you.
Yeah, let you handle that one, Mr. Bernstein.
That's up to the applicant.
Okay.
Whether they're willing to extend either or both lines to Jackson, and I wouldn't be surprised if there are others who might not make the same request on other streets in that neighborhood. But I'll leave that to Ms. Elgart, her client.
I think for purposes of this hearing, it's opening up a Pandora's Box. I think for purposes of this hearing, it's opening up a Pandora's Box, as you said, there's other residents. I'd have to talk to my client, obviously, to see if that's something we could even entertain. I have no idea, sitting here, whether, you know, how close it really is. So I don't know that this is, it could be part of this hearing. We can certainly take a look at it, but not part of the site plan application itself.
If I could follow up on that, I've had conversations with New Jersey American Wood.
Close your mark.
And they, New Jersey American Wood are hinted that they may require a loop for this site. I would suggest that the applicant sooner rather than later discuss, because it may turn out that New Jersey American wants a line to come down, in order to provide a loop, come down from this direction.
Okay, no, I, we would absolutely look at it. It's just that at this point, we can't say yes or no, obviously, that we would do that.
You could reach out to New Jersey American and start that kind of, I would hate to go through our whole training process, and then a year from now, find out that New Jersey American wants a line coming down Jackson. It would be helpful to this board if they knew that ahead of time, I think.
Understood.
Anyone else from the public? Come on up, state your name and address, and feel free to ask the applicant or the witness any questions regarding this testimony.
My name is Leo Barry. I live at 2161 Camplain Road, which would be the bottom left corner. My question is about the tree removal, which I got a letter in the mail that it was going to be a 20% removal, and they wanted to remove 30% of the trees. And that's what I thought this was all about tonight, because all of a sudden, I'm getting flooded in my basement. 36 years, I've had two floods. In the last three months, I've had about four. And you don't know how the water is running, you know, it's running in any direction, and you're building this thing around a stream. You're sitting there right in the middle of a stream, and I don't, I don't get that. Why you couldn't put it adjacent to the, to the track number one, number one? Because you want to get around that stream, you know, and it just, it just blows me away how you're doing this whole thing. The project's crazy. And my second question is, has to do with sewers, which might be not on this agenda, I take it?
No.
Because they want to have a temporary easement going through my property. And I've gotten letters in the mail about this, and they give me some kind of offer of, you know, pay me and this and that. And they want to go to my septic system, which isn't feasible. And these guys have, these guys have put more markers on my property you wouldn't believe over the years. And it's just, and everyone is different. And I don't think they know what they're doing.
Sir, does your, does your home show up on this plan? Could you point that out to where?
Right, right in the corner there, right without pools. You see the pool there, the swimming pool?
Right in the bottom left corner of the image, right here.
Without Boston Road, there you go. And I am getting flooded, since ever since they knocked down all them trees up there, I'm getting flooded.
I see people looking at me. I, I don't know how to answer that.
The first, the first phase, what they did, when they started doing it. I have not got 36 years in this house.
So you're talking about the, the Phase 1, not Phase 2?
Yeah, well.
Okay. Not, not the, not the, not this project, but the first project?
But the second project, I got a letter in the mail, they were, they were going to do 20% of the trees were going to be knocked down, and they wanted to do 37%. And there was never anything that was settled about that. And that's right what this whole meeting was about. And then it says this is the final meeting. I got a thing in the mail about the 17th or the 15th that there's another meeting for the final.
Well, this is what they call preliminary and final, so it's basically one application at once, but I don't, it's, it's, they're going through the whole plan right now, but this is on just.
I wasn't aware of that.
This phase, not the first phase. But I, I'm trying to understand, so you had problems once the first phase started, not this, not?
With, with, yeah.
Okay.
Tree removal. I mean, you got a stream, you're building this thing around a stream, which is ridiculous. It's totally crazy how you could do that, how you get away with it. Because I was told 25 years ago, never, ever build that here. They will never build that here, never be able to build that here. Well, after COVID, nobody cares anymore. It's like everything went out the window.
Who is "they"?
The whole country. I mean, it's like crazy.
The whole country said they were never going to build.
I don't know who "they" was 25 years ago.
Go back where we can. And just rake the box in and, no, you don't give a crap about nobody.
Sir, for the purpose, can you point out on the screen where your home is? Because I think everybody's all, because Phase 1 is on the other side of this project. Okay.
Would you know if that site is draining towards the subject area? Or is your subject area draining towards the resident?
The, the subject area is upstream of both this development and Phase 1. The elevations around that subject parcel shown on our plan are about 64, and the water runoff from there is draining toward our site, ultimately, you know, getting to the tributary, to the Royce Brook, and to the Royce Brook. So.
So your proposed improvements are down gradient from the homeowner?
That is correct.
Downstream, so to speak.
Downstream, down gradient, yes.
Now, when you get torrential rains like we've had over, you know, the last couple of months, I mean, it's just, you don't know where the water's going.
That's what the engineer's designing here and presenting, so.
You don't know the flow of water, nobody can determine that.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for the?
No, just as far as the sewers go, is that, that's nothing to do with tonight's meeting?
Well, I'm not sure if it's on-site sewers you're talking about, or?
They want to run a line right through my property.
Is that anything from?
I'm not sure that has to do with our application. No, 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 I'm, yeah, I don't know that whoever wants to run the sewers, I don't know that that's us. That's not, that's not part of this application. It's not part of our application. It's not, I don't know what notices you're getting, but that's not our.
I'm an attorney in, I believe, in Oakland.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm an attorney in Oakland, New Jersey. They wanted.
No, that's, that's a different project then.
Our proposed sanitary sewers are limited to the internal of our development and connecting to the rear of our property.
It must be a different project. You're probably getting the letters from a different. I'm not sure.
They want a temporary easement on my property, they want COVID.
You happen to have a copy of the letter, sir? You happen to have a copy of the letter with you?
No, I don't.
I would suggest to bring it to the planning office. Right, but to bring a copy of the letter so Mr. Coys can take a look at it and determine which project it's related to.
I mean, it's definitely related to this project. Where else would it be?
This is the attorney for the projects. I would like to think she knows what letters are going out, so.
They want, there's a pumping, apparently there's a pumping station back there somewhere?
Well, that's MUA.
That would be MUA.
Has a pumping station. That's the MUA that has a pumping station.
And they want to run it from Camplain's right through my property.
Well, that could be the MUA, not them. That is, could be a completely different thing.
To tie, to tie into these guys?
No.
They may be looking to me.
It could be an improvement.
Improvement for just the existing area, but not for this particular project.
Because I think, did you testify that your, your tie-in is in the back of the property? Is that correct?
That what?
No, I'm asking the engineer, that you're tying into the sewer in the back of the project, the existing line?
That's correct. On the screen, it's sort of the light tan area, which was the recently constructed sewer, and we're connecting to that sewer.
Okay. So they're opposite of your?
Yeah, I'm going to check it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you.
Sorry, I keep coming up.
Say your name again.
David Elliott. So he, he just reminded me of one point. If I'm going to go point to the screen.
So for the engineering water management, I talked to MUA. There's a pipe on our road, as I said, my property is completely downgraded from the street. The street is then slanted towards the house to the north here, and then there's a pipe under the road, which then discharges somewhere about right here, and then there's a stream that travels. And then there's a stream that travels, and I don't think it was documented on any of the files that someone was bringing up, all the way down through this road, through a pipe, and so on. So it kind of stops the water from traveling onto my property, flooding my property. I maintain the stream just so I don't get any flood. But my concern really would be the building, it'd be just when they come in with bulldozers to level the land, create it, that the stream don't be destroyed where the pipes under the road is.
We would agree to that.
Yes.
And then I had, just to follow up on my note before, because I didn't realize this was the final meeting.
Well, it doesn't mean we're going to get to a vote tonight. I don't know where we're going to end.
So just as I asked for the BERM before, I think everything I said before is more of a suggestion, but the actual grading, as I said, is pretty significant off my property. And I don't know if you care, but I circled where I'm proposing you were to put a BERM there. I don't know if that's your expertise or some, your applicant's or whoever. But when, would I be able to get an answer on that? Or would it just kind of maybe or may not show up at some point?
Yeah, we'll address it.
For those of you who keep seeing the man walking back and forth, this is Mr. Allenback. The board knows him, the public may not. He's associated with the developer, and I believe the designated person. Can we get a copy, Mr. Allenback, of that, when you get a chance? Not tonight, but when you get a chance? Yes?
I can.
I'm assuming you want it, so.
Do you want me to? I have a, I can scan.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, that maybe? I think it'd be a good time, because I haven't looked at Michael, and I know this is where about the hour and a half mark that he needs a break. Well, we all need a break. You know, are you, okay. Is there anyone else left from public? Let's, and then we will take a break once we're done with the public. We'll make copies at the break. Thank you.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue. Excuse me. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner. My Hillsborough property fronts Camplain Road. It's 2155 Camplain Road, that's block 86, lot 3. So I think that this is behind my property. Does this property have frontage on an improved street, road?
This parcel does not have frontage on an improved road.
So how is this, how is this project being allowed?
The project have front, has frontage on a township right-of-way Buffalo Road, in addition to several other right-of-ways. And the proposed project will improve that portion of Buffalo Road between Camplain Road and the site limit.
What, what is it, Buffalo Road? Is that, is that going to be the main access, Buffalo Road?
Camplain, Buffalo and Camplain.
That's correct.
Right now, what, what, what road do they have to go on to get onto Camplain?
It would be from Camplain to Buffalo.
It's going to eventually be a Buffalo Road created.
From that property?
Right, you see?
How is it going to?
As it goes to the north slightly, that's going to be Buffalo Road.
Where?
You see right there, leaving the development towards Camplain.
That little strip right there?
That's going to be Buffalo Road.
So that, right now, has no frontage, it's just on a, you're talking about a paper street, Buffalo, is, is Buffalo a, an improved road?
No, I can't answer that. I'm going to let you guys answer that.
Right, it's, it will be an improved road.
It will be. So right now, this, this property doesn't have, does not have frontage on an improved road?
We're going to improve the road.
We're going to improve the road. So, so that property, that property belongs to Hillsborough right now, yes?
Yes.
Buffalo belongs to Hillsborough.
Correct, it's a right-of-way.
The, as a matter of fact, the entire property in the back also belongs to Hillsborough. That, what, what we're talking about right now, block 86, lot 21.02, belongs to Hillsborough.
Correct.
All right, so what, when is the, when is that, when is that going to be purchased for this project?
That's subject to another agreement. That's not subject to the site plan itself.
The engineer is not positioned to answer that question. Of the engineer.
Okay. So, Mr. Parkhill, you're an engineer. Have you, have you been before Hillsborough's planning board before?
I have not had the pleasure, this is my first time.
First time. Have you done work for this developer before?
This is our first project together. We are working on other projects as well.
You have worked with them on other projects?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Parkhill, you said that this area is primarily wooded?
That's correct.
Would you say that there's a lot of wetlands there?
There are wetlands that exist on site, yes.
Would you say there's a lot of wetlands?
I think he just answered that there are wetlands on site.
There are wetlands, okay. So originally, this had been one large property, and it was subdivided. Currently, how many, how many acres? This, not currently, but once it was subdivided, what is the acreage of this property now?
31.3 acres.
Okay, and how many acres are buildable?
I think I testified that the total unencumbered area of this parcel is nine acres, roughly.
So, so nine acres unencumbered, and what, what the other acres, what is on those acres that causes them to be not unencumbered?
Sure. A combination of NJDEP-regulated flood hazard areas, riparian buffers, freshwater wetlands areas, associated freshwater wetland buffers, and Hillsborough Township stream corridor area.
Wow.
As well as DRCC-regulated area as well.
Wow, okay. Once this property was subdivided, it was now two different, two totally, two, two totally different, different landscapes. Does this property have a letter of interpretation from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes, the LOI, the LOI obtained was for both parcels.
It's what?
The LOI obtained covered both parcels.
How did it cover both parcels? It's a separate, separate property now, right now, with a separate project going on it, and it has all of these encumbrances. How, how is that not, how is it not necessary to have a letter of interpretation for this property?
Well, we have a valid, a letter of interpretation from the DEP that applies to this property.
And, and this developer applied for that?
No.
So then how does this property have a valid letter of interpretation?
The DEP issues LOIs based on conditions in the field, and that approval gets filed and follows the land, does not file to person. The DEP does not issue an LOI to a person, they issue it based on a land area. And this project, as I stated, does have a valid LOI.
Okay, well, but the original land area was, was one large parcel?
That's correct.
All right, so actually, this particular site doesn't have its own LOI, because there's so many constraints on there.
Ms. Janusik, next question, no commentary.
Okay. Let's see here. So now, access to this property will be required, you're, you're seeking a waiver, because by law, you require two accesses to the property, and you have only one?
Well, according to the redevelopment plan.
What redevelopment plan?
There's a redevelopment plan, so that's, it's not necessarily an ordinance, or it's, it's an ordinance, but it's a redevelopment plan.
And what is the, and what are you talking about as far as the redevelopment plan? What are you saying?
It's subject to a redevelopment plan.
Yes, and what?
So that's why, that's where it is.
That's where what is?
You got to get closer to the mic.
Sorry, that's where it says that there's two accesses, and so we're looking for a waiver for that.
So the redevelopment plan, the Sherman redevelopment plan requires two accesses, and you're saying we want a waiver from that redevelopment plan to have only one access?
Correct.
So most of the things that are, that are required are requirements of the development plan, in addition to whatever else, whatever other ordinances there are. Besides the ordinances, Hillsborough's ordinances, you also have requirements specific to the redevelopment plan.
It's considered an ordinance. So yes.
The redevelopment plan is considered an ordinance?
Correct. It's the equivalent of.
Equivalent, equivalent of, but not an ordinance. Are there any requirements for this, for this property in the settlement agreement?
And that's not a question for the engineer.
Okay.
It wasn't part of this testimony.
So what is the distance between the development that's on phase one, the RPM development, and this development? What's the distance between the two?
Do you understand?
I do understand the question.
Other one, Mr. Parkhill. A1.
At the closest point, it's in excess of 200 feet. And from the closest point grows more in both directions.
I'm sorry, at the, at the closest point, it's how much?
200 feet.
200 feet at the closest point. And is that going to, going to be where the path or whichever connection, is that, is that where the, the connection between the two is going to be?
The connection between the two will be in close vicinity to that. I don't, as I said, the connection's not designed yet, so I don't know the exact. I'm sorry. The connection will be in close vicinity to that. I don't exactly know where that connection will be, it has not yet been designed.
Okay, and the connection between the two is, is going to require crossing the stream?
Yes, that's correct.
So do you have to, do you have to get a waiver from the township for that?
No.
Don't answer Mark.
I don't, I mean, I don't think that's a waiver.
Such, such that the town professionals would identify our waiver would be needed. We are requesting that waiver in order to accommodate a request from the board's professionals.
Where, where did you say the emergency vehicle access is going to be?
It will connect to the end of Jackson Street.
The end of Jackson Street? So that's, and will that road be improved?
Are there no proposed improvements to Jackson Street?
No, no proposed. And will that be able to handle heavy, heavy emergency equipment?
That will provide emergency vehicle access to our site, yes.
I'm sorry, what?
Yes, that will provide emergency vehicle, vehicle access to our site.
I, I, I understand that it's supposed to provide it, but will it be able to handle the heavy emergency equipment that might be necessary?
Yes, it's an improved street with existing residential structures on it. My assumption is that it, right now, can provide emergency access to those existing structures, and would continue to be able to comply and provide access to our site.
You said that's an improved street?
Jackson Street, yes.
It is improved. Okay. You were discussing earlier, discussing a letter in different points. What letter, what was, what was that letter? What were you referring to?
That was a engineering review letter number two for the Sherman tract, phase two, with the date of May 2nd, 2024, authored by Mr. Mayhew of Pinone and Associates.
Okay, what was the, initially, would you say what the, what was the, the letter?
Engineering review number two.
Engineering review number two. Okay. In regard to the soil, comments were made that, that right now, you're showing that it's the soil, it's C soil, but it looks like it might be D soil. What is the difference between a C soil and a D soil?
Sure. So C soils provide limited ability for permeability, or the water to sort of perk through the soils. D soils provide virtually no ability for water to perk into the soils. Based on, you know, the, the initial investigation we have done out there, it's indicating that the existing soils on site are not currently draining and would not accept, you know, infiltration structures. That's why what Mr. Mayhew referred to is reclassifying the soils to a D soil, so that, you know, you weren't creating an instance where you're trying to infiltrate soil into soils that will not accept that.
So right now, if you're going to, going to build there, and you're going to be providing a lot of impervious surface, and now if this soil doesn't drain, what do you do?
The stormwater management system is designed to collect the runoff and send it to three small-scale bioretention basins, which ultimately will discharge to the Royce Brook, tributary to the Royce Brook.
Okay, so the Royce Brook. The Royce Brook is, is, is needing to handle quite a bit of.
No comment.
Quite a bit of runoff from a lot of developments, which causes flooding.
Okay, Ms. Janusik, and you're finished, if you have no more questions.
Go ahead. Comment was made, something about off-street parking? What was that, what was that about? That there were, the waiver wasn't required for parking because it's considered off-street parking? Is that what was said? I didn't catch that.
There was a discussion. There was a discussion about internally whether it should be considered off-street or on-street parking, when you go, when, when there's parking along the, the buildings.
And there's parking along what?
There's parking along the buildings, and whether they should be considered on-street or off-street parking. That was the discussion.
And so, and so what is it considered to be?
The, the parking is located along that Center Boulevard, parallel parking, instead of perpendicular parking like the rest of the site. And the discussion was around the setback of that parking to the building. That parking is proposed to be set back 14 feet from the building, where the redevelopment plan requires a 20-foot setback to the street. We do provide 20-foot setback to the cartway, but not 20 feet to the edge of the parking space. On-street parking is sort of not addressed in the redevelopment plan in, in that particular instance, so that's why there was a discussion about that.
And it's really up to the board to characterize whether it's off-street or on-street, and that's what we were talking about. So we'll defer to the board as to whether they're going to consider it off-street or on-street.
And whether a waiver's required or not.
Oh, so I was just going to ask, so you, you don't know whether you require a waiver or not yet, as far as parking is concerned?
Correct.
Okay. This property is identified as an area in need of rehabilitation. What, what is the rehabilitation that this property requires?
Not applicable.
Not applicable, okay. Even though it's an area in need of rehabilitation. All right, comments were made about something that this, this project can't comply with. And then this proposed access is across Camplain, so you have to cross a tributary of the stream to get to Camplain? Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, it's correct that we're crossing a tributary with our access road to Camplain.
So the access road is, is what road that we're referring to right now?
I believe it's the main entry. I, I've been referring to the main entry connecting our site to Camplain as the access road.
And so what is that main entry? What is that road? The name of it?
It does not currently have a name. It does connect to the terminus of Buffalo Street right-of-way.
So, so this, what you're talking about, this proposed access to Camplain, that's not Buffalo, that's not Buffalo Road?
No, I, I think I just said that it connected to the terminus of the right-of-way of Buffalo Street.
So this, this is the only access that we're talking about, the one access, and this has to cross the stream? The, the tributary of the stream?
That's correct.
So is that, comment was made about crossing a regulated water. Are you, were you referring to that stream when that was, when that comment was made about a regulated water?
Yes, I was.
Who regulates that? The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
So comment was made that this, this site is encumbered by the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission easement or by the, by the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission and three other agencies. I didn't write them down. What are the other three agencies? Would that be the, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection?
That's correct.
And what else?
The Township of Hillsboro and the Soil Conservation District.
Okay. There's going to be three small-scale bio-retention basins built for stormwater management. Where are those bio-retention basins going to be located?
I'll point to my screen for clarification. There's two to the top of sheet A2 as displayed. And then there is one on the bottom right corner of sheet A2 as well.
Okay. Now, what about, what about properties that have septic systems? Existing properties that have septic systems? How does all of this impact those, those, those septic systems, the, the ground for the septic systems? What, what's the impact going to be with this?
I think that wasn't part of his testimony.
Excuse me?
That wasn't part of Mr. Parkill's testimony.
Okay, so that's, that, that's not an issue. As far as that, that access road, there won't be any, any sidewalks anywhere on that road?
That's correct.
School buses will be going, school buses will be going to the development or, or?
That's not for the engineer to answer. We've already established that it'll be the traffic engineer.
What, what, what is, what is the size of that Boulevard that's, that's possibly going to be eliminated?
I think Mr. Mayhew indicated 62 feet.
What, I'm sorry, how much?
62 feet is the width.
72?
62 feet.
62 feet. Have, have permits been, been issued already or have permits been applied for?
For what?
From the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and DNR Canal Commission and wherever else they need to be obtained from.
We've applied for some outside agency approvals, but we have not applied for all.
I'm sorry.
We have applied for some outside agency approvals, but have not applied for all outside, outside agency approvals.
And have you gotten a response to the will-serv letters for water and sanitary sewer?
Yes, I believe I testified that we do have will-serv letters for both water and sewer.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
I'm going to let him get his chance now because I saw you itching.
I don't want to delay this anymore. Grand Comer 144 Taylor Avenue. It's about just the, the, the emergency access. That, that could provide access to cars if so one wanted to go through there. Is there any, is there going to be engineered, you know, designed to have maybe posters or like some chain elements? So then is that part of the design?
Yeah, so part of, the, the intention is that it would be, it would appear to be grass. So like a grass paver where it would, you know, grow through so it would not look like a roadway. And then, you know, typically a chain, like a breakaway chain would be put there. So just to discourage vehicles from driving through there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify one thing that I believe Mr. Parkill said.
Just name, just.
David Elliott Block 114, I believe. It was about, is Jackson Street an improved road? And I'm quoting Tom Bellinger from the Hillsboro Engineering Director.
I, I, we're going to start reading things. You have to be sworn in and testify because Mr. Bellinger is not here. No one has seen any of this information.
Okay.
And I'm assuming he's about to discuss whether or not Jackson is an improved or an unimproved road.
Yes. I don't have to quote him?
I would suggest unless you want to testify and you have direct knowledge that it's an unimproved or improved road and not relying on Mr. Bellinger, who is the engineering director for the township, then you might want to provide it to Mr. Coys. Otherwise, so that he can provide it to everyone. Otherwise, it's unsubstantiated. And I'm not saying it doesn't have value, it's just unsubstantiated.
Okay, can I just say that I, the, I don't, I don't want to say the wrong thing here. It's an email in writing, just to quote like what the road's made of?
It's what we know and it's hearsay testimony.
Okay.
The testimony being proven for the truth of the matter asserted that you are not personally aware of. You're relying on the recommendation or comments of a third party. If you'd like to provide Mr. Coys with that email, the man.
During, during the break.
During the break, we, we can attempt to circulate it, but it's not necessarily binding at this moment. But I agree with the chairman, I suspect we'll be back.
Can I just bring up the point without quoting him or mentioning his name at all?
What, what's the, what's the issue?
It's just that it's not a paved road, it's a chip-sealed road. That's all I was going to say.
Is that correct, Mr. Parkill? As far as you're aware, Jackson Street is a chip-sealed road?
If you're aware, if you're not.
If you have knowledge, if you don't.
I'm not aware.
Thank you.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you're standing between us and a break.
Other people were standing between you and a break 20 minutes ago. So leaving that, so Mr. Parkill, what's the status of the application to DEP for the crossing over the culvert?
We have not made that application to DEP yet.
And therefore, obviously, a condition of any approval would be that the DEP approves over the culvert. If they don't, we're back here at square one with another application, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we are going to take a 10-minute recess. We don't have the big clocks, I got to use.
9:20.
We'll say 9:20 on the clock that's back there, but then that may not be synced to your phone, so. We're back in session.
Thank you. I'd like to call Ron Allenbach. He's the Director of Planning and Engineering on behalf of M&amp;M at Camplain Road. He just, I'm just going to bring him up to explain some of the things that we had. Oh, here we go.
Ms. Elgar, before we swear, swear at Mr. or swear in Mr. Allenbach. For the purposes of the record, Mr. Chairman, the board has been provided a copy, as I believe counsel for the applicant, as well as the board professionals, Mr. Coys, Mr. Mayhew, myself, of the document that was provided by a member of the public. Earlier, I apologize for not mentioning the gentleman's name where he circles a series of plantings, berm's, et cetera, out by what I believe is between Jackson Street and Grant, which is what he was alluding to, I believe. The testimony or the request he was making was that the applicant provide sufficient berming landscaping, et cetera, in order to deal with the issue of runoff related to the application.
And this, the, it's David Elliott I have, and he's at 21 Jackson Street, just to, just for the record.
We're going to mark this as, any problem marking this as A4 rather than O1?
We can mark it as A4, it's fine. Thank you.
2191.
So close, 2191.
We were all corrected.
We all got a little bit, some of the numbers here and there.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Thank you, Ms. Elgar. Now you can, Mr. Lombardozzi, if you'd swear Mr. Allenbach in.
I do. Sure, Ronald Allenbach, A U L E N B A C H. Mr. Chairman, it's appropriate, listening to some of the questions from the public and from, also from the board, I just want to put some clarification.
Mr. Allenbach, for the purpose of the record, I know you've been before the board more times than most of the professionals have been over the years. State your position with the applicant and your qualifications related there, too.
Sure, I apologize again, as indicated, I'm the Director of Engineering, Planning and Development for Edgewood Properties, par company of M&amp;M at Camplain Road. I've been with Edgewood Properties for 25 years, appeared before this board as a fact witness for the developer, and that's what I'm here for tonight. Mr. Chairman, a couple of things related to Mr. Elliott and his request and A4. I apologize, the screen is not cooperating with us. But as indicated, and what he circled on here was on our landscaping plan and what is referred to as A4 on sheet nine of 17, he had encircled some supplemental plantings that were doing along his property line there. There's an existing tree line that we were not, except for these supplemental plantings, we're not planning on going in. Our grading stops outside the existing tree line. It's not our intention to go up to his property. Again, we'd be happy to work with the resident on those supplemental plantings in concurrent, concurrence with the township. But it wasn't our plan to go in there and do grading. So therefore, a berm is really not possible because I'd have to do additional clearing of those trees, existing trees that are in there. And again, as I stand here today, it's difficult when you look at a site plan or a survey and they show that proverbial tree line doesn't always necessarily mean it has fully wooded, thick trees in there, it could be just sparse trees, which is why we're supplementing some landscaping in there. But again, on our record.
For the purpose of the record, can you point out on the screen? This is A2, the tree line you're talking about, I think it's obviously.
Again, as indicated, it's in the southwest corner of the property along here. Again, as indicated, what's shown on here in the different colors is the supplemental landscaping, but our grading really only extends, only extends by the parking lot.
Anything else you can do? Apparently you're able to put things up that aren't there and move the screen. The man, the man is amazing.
And so, and again, I'd be happy to work with the applicant in conjunction, I'm sorry, with the resident as well as in conjunction with the township engineer and David's office for that supplemental planning, whether during construction or whatever, to ensure, again, we're not intending to go near his property line so that drainage ditch or whatever he's referring to will continue. And obviously, this is, we're long-term holders here, this is going to be our project. Obviously, we'll be around, if there's any issues out there, we could make sure we get out there to fix any potential issues that were caused by our construction there. As it relates to the bus stop, and again, in working in conjunction with the township and the school board, it's our intention to have the bus come into the site, work with the school board as to exact location of the bus stop. I will point out that based on the board's professionals and, you know, our concurrence about this elimination of the Boulevard, it does give us an opportunity, if you will, to locate the bus stop in and around those, those areas on the Ring Road in close proximity that would be more centrally located for a bus to come into the site, either circle it and then pick up the children and leave, or pick up the children and circle it and leave. But again, that's something that we would work with both the township and the Board of Education for that location of that bus stop. As far as the sidewalk connection to Phase One, the only thing I put out there, and again, we agreed to, to work with the township and NJDEP for that connection. The one thing I will point out, there's several comments came up about location. And obviously, we don't know the full design of it. And I know Mr. Parkill talked about a potential location in between the two basins that connect at its closest proximity. I will suggest, and again, working with the professionals, you know, if you look at the, the static exhibit that's on the screen, where you see the tan line or the existing cleared line with a sanitary sewer, that sanitary sewer extends into Phase One. One suggestion for the board professionals to consider is putting the, and again, if the HTM UA will allow it, to put the sidewalk in that location. The trees are already cleared, the path is there already. It may be a longer sidewalk as far as walking distance, but it may be something that exits behind that building that's on the 45-degree angle, wraps around the detention basin to get to that easement area and then cross the stream in that area. It still would involve a culvert, but again, the trees are already cleared, the stream corridor disturbance is already there from the sanitary sewer. And we could simply, again, if the HTM UA will allow this temporary walk, or not temporary, this walkway on top of their sanitary sewer easement, I just put that out there for the board and the professionals to consider that it might be a, a better location ultimately. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, I don't know, you might get questioned. No, 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 you guys said. Just want to make sure. Any questions?
Any questions? Sorry.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have the ability?
Close my.
I noticed we have three exhibits up on the screen. Do you have the ability to pull up any of the submitted documents on the screen?
We can't get rid of the ghost ones.
That's actually not even from our computer right now. That's just static, literally static from before. We unplugged the computer so that we don't even know why it's still exhibiting A3. So that's really all we have access to right now. That's, that's somebody else's computer.
Somebody else's computer.
That is clearly Ron's computer because it has the, the battery.
Computer is taking over.
Yeah.
I even tried doing the, when you do the control.
Was our IT was saying to mirror.
Yeah, it's on doing here.
How?
Sending the picture through the USB, it's just not working.
Mr. Mayhew, so we'll try this without exhibits. I'm referring to school bus circulation plan. And I don't know if you're the right person, but you were talking about school buses. This is sheet one of three by Mid-Atlantic Engineering, last revised April 19th, 2024. And my concern is that it shows the bus turning movements around the site and then out onto Camplain Road. And when the bus, it appears when the bus is making the turn on Camplain Road, it's crossing over the center line. And when it's making a turn from Camplain into the site, it would be interdicting if there was a car waiting to pull out. And I don't know how to show this to anybody, but is this something that we can agree there will be additional engineering effort to eliminate these conflicts?
Yeah, I, I mean, the question is probably more for Mr. Parkill, but I know that it's, it's our intention not to have that conflict. So if that means wider radiuses to allow for the school buses to make that turn without going into oncoming traffic, certainly we'd, something we would be willing to work with you on.
Okay. On sheet 203, there's a fire truck circulation plan. It's the Hillsboro ladder truck. And it's also, it appears to have a conflict when the truck's trying to enter the site, it would hit a car if there was a car waiting to pull out. Now, it also crosses the center line. I think we're all familiar with if there was an emergency vehicle, there's going to be lights on, other vehicles will yield away. So I think there can be some flexibility on crossing the center line for emergency vehicles, unlike say for a school bus that's moving. But I would ask that your engineers take a close look at the emergency vehicle entering. It's conflicting with if there was a car trying to exit. It's a significant conflict. It's, on the plan, it's taking up the full exit lane to make this movement. And I think that's more than what a typical, you know, sometimes you have to back up to let a vehicle in. And I could appreciate a little bit of movement, but this is a significant conflict that I would ask that your engineers take a look at.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayhew, between, yeah, Mr. Parkill and the traffic engineers, we'll take a close look at that and provide some options or alternatives to you so that you can take a look at it until you're, you know, satisfied that you're, there's not going to be that. Again, like you said, there may be a potential smaller conflict, like you said, but obviously to minimize whatever conflicts are at that intersection.
And while we're talking about that intersection, I don't know if you're the right person, there's currently, it looks like, street trees proposed on both sides of the cartway within the Buffalo Street right of way. One of our comments was to add some screening, some, I would prefer evergreen screening in addition to these street trees to provide screening to the existing residents on each side. We didn't touch upon that in our review letter. Is that something that is agreeable?
Yeah, it is. I think that's why we skipped over because we would agree to comply with that.
Yeah, it was in the, in the review letter, actually, so, thank you.
I, I think that's all I have then for, for this witness.
Mr. Chairman, can Mr. Coys say anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, board members. Okay, we're still open to public?
Yep.
Anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on his testimony? Please state your name and address for the record.
Marie Janusak, 720 East Freck Avenue, and owner of Block 86, Lot 3 in Hillsborough, 2155 Camplain Road. In regard to the school bus going into the site, comments were just made that there's not enough room to properly turn in and out, that that bus would have to cross the center lane. Is that correct?
Yeah, we agreed to work with the engineer to avoid that conflict.
Why is that even an issue right now? I mean, how, what kind of plans have been made?
And it changes that they've already answered the question, they're going to work with the engineer to eliminate-
Well, that's my next question, is, is how, how, how were these plans made that a bus can't turn in without going, and so if there's another vehicle coming, then there would be, there would be an accident?
Correct.
And you've got children on a school bus.
Mr. Janusak, next question, please.
All right. So what, what would be a proposal to remedy the situation? Are you going to be able to widen that access road?
Again, as indicated, we'd work with the township professionals. It could be simply having larger radii on the curves to allow for a larger vehicle to make those turns without having a conflict there.
I'm sorry, what, what does that mean, have larger radii where, at the curves?
At the curves coming into the site. The curves that come in would have a larger radii to pull the curb back to give more room for the vehicles to maneuver.
And that would be, would that be the only solution?
I don't know, I have to, I have to, we have, the engineer has to look at it, the truck turning and see what the conflicts are. It may be a combination of things. I can't say that as I'm sitting here today.
Okay, in regard to that sidewalk connection, you say that there are, are there sanitary sewers already extending into the, the subject site now, where you have to, you have to put the sewers in to connect them to Phase One?
They're existing.
They're what?
They're existing.
Existing? And so you, you're proposing doing what, like a, a walkway over that, over that area, over the area where the, where the sewers?
That was just one of my suggestions to the board and the board's professionals to, one of the options to look at.
And where, where is that culvert? That is, that the, the proposal right now is to have that connection going over, over culvert?
What connection? The sidewalk?
The, the connection between the two developments.
Right. As I indicated, and as Mr. Parkill indicated, any crossing from, of a sidewalk or pedestrian path from our site to the Phase One would require a NJDEP permit, which requires us to cross the tributary or that stream that runs north to south. That's what I refer to as a pipe or culvert that has to be there so the water can continue to pass through while we build a sidewalk over the top of it.
And why is there not another location so that you're not going over, where that stream is going the whole distance?
Runs the whole length of the property.
And we're proposing it merely because the board has asked us for the, there to be pedestrian access to Phase One. So you don't see it now because we're considering doing it, we're going to see if we can do it, and that's, we're trying to accommodate the board and the board's professionals, what they had suggested and asked for.
So there are still a number of revisions that are going to have to be made to these, to these plans?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Grant Colmer, 144 Taylor, would you be able to answer why the priority was given to exit out onto Camplain? Are you the person that could give some clarity rather than going through Phase One?
Well, I could talk to you as, as a developer, why we decided to go that. The redevelopment plan always contemplated access out to Camplain. Camplain is an existing roadway network system that we'd be tying into as opposed to going through another private development. Even though the, the private development adjacent to us was set up for a potential connection, it was determined by us that it was better for us and for the development to use the primary connection out to a public right of way and not go through a private development.
Budgetary reasons?
Not at all.
Engineering reasons?
Not at all. It's the same string crossing you'd have to do.
Better for you, why better for you?
Better access.
Better access for the community?
For my residents, they'll have to go through a private development to get to their homes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, don't see anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we can swear in, Mr. Andrew Vichio.
Yes, I do. First name Andrew, last name Vichio, V as in Victor, I S as in Sam, C H I O.
And could you say for the, for the board, what your educational background is and qualifications and licensure?
Absolutely. I'm a professional engineer with Stonefield Engineering and Design, located at 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer, as I said, in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I received my bachelor's and master's degrees, both in civil engineering from the Georgia Institute of Technology. I have been practicing engineering for approximately 13 years now, both in the private and public sectors, and I have been accepted as an expert in traffic engineering before planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. If the board would accept Mr. Vichio as a traffic, as a traffic expert?
Any objections? Okay, we accept, please proceed.
Thank you. So you had submitted two traffic impact studies, correct, June 15th, 2023, and revised April 19th, 2024. If you could go through some parts of it with regard to describing the project and the circulation around the project itself, within the project, the location, and if you can go through some of the traffic issues, if any, that you've encountered?
Absolutely. So, beginning with our site location and context, the site is located on the south side of Camplain Road, as was previously testified to. We are approximately 750 feet east of Sunnymead Road. The nearby land uses are generally residential and industrial in nature. Camplain Road is approximately 24 feet wide. It is under municipal jurisdiction. The posted speed limit is 35 miles per hour. It carries approximately 6,000 vehicles per day, and it is classified as an urban major collector. I think that's an important, important point to expand on, given the, the discussion about access directly to Camplain Road versus access through Phase One. So collector roads are major and minor roads that connect local roads and streets with arterials. Collector roads provide less mobility than arterials do at lower speeds. And for short distances, the reason being is that they balance mobility with land access. So land access, direct access to, to properties is contemplated with the classification of this roadway as a collector roadway. Access, Camplain Road provides access to Route 206, less than a mile to the west. And as I, if I forgot to mention, it is approximately 750 feet east of, I should have clarified that it is an unsignalized intersection with Sunnymead Road. So in addition to investigating and assessing the surrounding roadway and adjacent land uses, existing traffic volumes also serve as the basis for our traffic analysis. Turning movement counts in the report submitted and last revised April 19th, 2024, were collected in 2019, and they were grown to a existing year of 2024. Subsequent to the submission of the latest traffic report, we did collect supplemental traffic counts. Those traffic counts were collected on Thursday, April 18th, 2024, one day prior to the resubmission of our traffic study. Those traffic counts were collected from 7:00 to 9:00 AM and from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Very important to note, Sunnymead Elementary School was in session. Comparing the traffic counts that were recently collected, collected to the ones that were used from 2019 and grown to the 2024 condition, the new AM weekday morning peak period traffic counts were approximately 15% lower than the counts that were grown from 2019. However, the evening peak hour counts were approximately 2% higher than the 2019 traffic volumes that were grown to 2024. So with the existing counts serving as a basis for our analysis, we then take a look at what the traffic may be generated by the proposed development, and we do that by looking to industry standard resources. In this case, we sought out the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual for this development, which is 88 total low-rise multifamily apartments. Based on that information, we are projecting that there would be less than one vehicle entering and exiting the site every minute during the busiest peak hour, which is the weekday evening peak hour. So 45 trips in and out combined total. So less than one vehicle every minute. That, that number being less than 50 total trips is important because the Institute of Transportation Engineers establishes 50 trips as a general guideline or threshold for the scale of a development that could potentially impact the operations of the surrounding land use, surrounding roadway network. So right off the bat, we know before we even analyze any nearby intersections, it's highly unlikely that a development of this scale would appreciably impact the surrounding roadway network. Nevertheless, we did conduct a, a quantitative analysis of the unsignalized intersection of Camplain Road and Sunnymead Road. And our findings are that with the addition of the traffic that would be generated by this development, the, the operations at all approaches to that intersection would continue to operate generally consistent with a future condition where this development is not constructed. More specifically, only one new vehicle would travel through that unsignalized intersection every two minutes, and our new, our new site traffic only represents approximately 3% of the total volume through that unsignalized intersection. Taking a look now at the site access, one full movement driveway is proposed along Camplain Road, and gated emergency access is also provided to Jackson Street. I understand that we are requesting a waiver for not providing a second access point, but my interpretation is that we really are meeting the intent of that section of the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan reads that the redeveloper of parcel B will provide at least two street connections to the surrounding street network that will, that will allow for free flow of traffic within and through the rehabilitation area, including emergency vehicles and school buses. So it is my opinion that by providing emergency access to Jackson Street, we are meeting the intent of that, of that requirement. Having access on Camplain Road is, a, a single point of access on Camplain Road is appropriate because the, the capacity at the single driveway is adequate for the low traffic generation of the site. Going back to the discussion about potentially connecting with Phase One, the, the downside to that would be not just the impact to the frontage roads for that private development and the residents that may live there, but also a busier, single intersection that, that might incur more delay as vehicles are entering and exiting that one consolidated entrance and exit point. I understand that we currently, as submitted, meet the proposed parking requirement of 201 spaces. I understand that we are making an effort to make some minor changes to the design of the site to eliminate the center drive aisle. We will strive to make, to meet that requirement, that parking requirement. With the redesign, we will continue to provide adequate, adequately sized parking spaces, both 90-degree and parallel parking spaces, if there are parallel parking spaces on the future site plan. And in conclusion, I would just like to say that the, based on our, our capacity analysis that we prepared and submitted within our traffic impact study, and based on industry standards and guidelines, the proposed development would not have a significant impact on the traffic operations of the adjacent roadway network. A single full, full movement access point on Camplain Road is sufficient to accommodate the vehicular demand of the proposed development. Again, based on our qualitative, I apologize, quantitative analysis of that, of that driveway. The emergency access road provides a convenient connection to the surrounding roadway network, and it would require a limited disturbance to connect to Jackson Street, and we will continue to make an effort to provide a parking supply that is sufficient to support this project. That concludes my direct testimony. I'm, I made an effort to address some of the questions in the review letters, but I'm sure there's some cleaning up that we have to do.
Yes. And I do have just a follow-up question with regard to the fact, by providing the full access from Camplain Road and the emergency access through Jackson, do we comply with RSIS?
We do. So RSIS would categorize this type of development as a multifamily access cul-de-sac. Specifically, they state that streets serving multifamily developments with a single means of ingress and egress shall be classified as multifamily access cul-de-sacs. Now, that is an appropriate orientation of access where average daily traffic does not exceed 1,000 vehicles. In our case, again, citing the residential site improvement standards, RSIS, the, RSIS provides a trip generation rate, a daily trip generation rate of 7.2 vehicles per unit, which equals, I'm losing my notes, but it's approximately 600 trips, well, well, well fewer than 1,000 in a day.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to refer you to the, to Panoni's letter dated May 2nd, 2024, and I'm just going to ask you to turn to page three. And I just have a question with regard to the second comment, with regard to the suggestion that there should be, or suggest, considering pedestrian access from Jackson down to Sunnymead Elementary School. If you could just touch on the safety aspects of it and your, your opinion with regard to that?
Yeah, I think I understand the, the intent of the comment. However, the, the geometry of the surrounding roadway network makes pedestrian accommodations along Jackson or Adams to Sunnymead extremely challenging. Specifically, Sunnymead- to Sunnymead extremely challenging. Specifically, Sunnymead Road is only 22 feet wide from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. So providing a safe ADA accessible sidewalk alongside Sunnymead Road would be extremely challenging. And the Jackson Street itself is approximately, varies from 15 feet wide to 18 feet wide in cartway width. So again, that narrow width makes it extremely challenging to construct a sidewalk. Beyond the geometric challenges that these roadways pose is the the challenge of establishing a safe crosswalk across Sunnymead Road for pedestrians who would desire to take their children to or to Sunnymead Elementary School. So the combination of that challenging pedestrian crossing, the narrow roadway widths make it an unsafe environment to, and a challenging environment to construct pedestrian improvements to to meet this request.
And if you could turn to page four, number five. If you could address the widening that's being suggested there.
Absolutely. So the the widening, if I, my understanding of the comment is that the the widening would facilitate turns in and out of the site. Now, we do not feel that that is necessary or warranted for a few reasons. Referring back to our traffic the site driveway, the left turn into the site driveway is calculated to take no more than 8.1 seconds during the weekday evening peak hour. The so the left turn in does not require any room for a vehicle to pass someone desiring to make the left turn into the site. For the for the right turn in, the Ashdod Green Book, which is a policy on the geometric design of highways and streets, does not provide a warrant for auxiliary lanes or or widening tapers. However, we did research the NCHRP report 279, which provides some guidance there as far as warrants for when a deceleration lane is necessary for for right turns. Looking at that report, the the approach volume of 321 vehicles would require 35 turning movements, right turn movements, to meet that warrant, whereas we are only proposing or projecting 18. So we do not meet the warrants that we researched for the deceleration lane. And in addition to that, our capacity analysis doesn't justify the need for any shoulders or widening to facilitate turns in and out of the site.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm almost done, just want to direct you to page 16, where under traffic impact statement, just with regards to one and two there, the four professionals had asked that we grow the volumes to 2024 levels, and that's what you were talking about, that you submitted an updated plan. Is that right?
That is correct.
Excuse me about that. Thank you. Okay. I don't have any further questions. I think we've covered everything we need from the letter, but we're open to.
I always start to my left, Mr. Mahew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I would just like to focus on one item, and that is page four of our report, item number five, which Andrew had discussed, that the left-hand or right-hand turns, in his opinion, are not warranted. We're not proposing a dedicated left-hand turn lane, and in our in our notes, not proposing a dedicated decel lane. What we're proposing is providing safe paved cartway for when vehicles do stop and pause to make a left. If you look at the roadway today, there's areas along that roadway where cars have been running off the edge of pavement, and that introduces a very significant safety issue if tires and wheels are going off the side of pavement. So what we're proposing is a very modest 12-foot travel lane each way with an eight-foot paved shoulder, and we're only asking it for the length of the right-of-way that they're coming in front and going, which is 60 feet. And so if I could, we're just asking for the roadway to be improved for 60 feet, which is mirroring the amount of frontage they have along this road. And then when you widen it, so if you have a 12-foot travel way with an eight-foot paved shoulder, that's 20 feet from the center line. And then we're simply asking for tapers, a taper going eastbound and a taper going westbound, so that there's the proper taper based on speed. So within 100 and some feet, those tapers would disappear. It's a very modest, and I think it greatly increases the safety for when vehicles do slow down to turn right in. It increases the safety for when vehicles are parked there to turn left. And as we pointed out, the current intersection is not accommodating the school bus without conflicts. It's not accommodating the emergency vehicles without conflicts. And I think introducing these can help the applicant adjust, address those conflicts. So I would continue, our office would continue to reiterate that this should be given serious
If Mr. Allaback could respond to it, I would appreciate it. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Again, we appreciate it, and it wasn't necessarily the the widening that we had an issue with, because it is, as Mr. Mahew, limited to that frontage right-of-way. The issue comes in with the taper, because we have that culvert that's to the west of us that may or may not be impacted. You know, we have some limited survey information out there, and our concern with that taper, as you extend it further down the road, is the need to now take a head wall that's existing and now push it further down away from the road, which would impact NJDEP, require additional permitting, and that's where our concern is. If there was a way to work it out where that taper fit within the existing edge of pavement and the existing head wall, we have no issue with guardrails to protect the head wall. We just didn't want to get into a permitting, I don't want to say nightmare, but another permitting issue with the widening of that culvert on either side, specifically more our side, but the other side, and then also existing utility poles on the other side. We would have to just take that into consideration to see where they land with that widening. And if it's a seven-foot shoulder instead of an eight-foot shoulder, or 11-foot lane instead of a 12-foot lane, to accommodate, you know, that we're not moving five different poles, or we're not moving a head wall, we'd be happy to work with the engineer on that.
I can't speak to the impact potential to utility poles. Our office did look at the culvert, based on, as you said, there might need to be some more detailed survey. But based on the survey provided, and based on our math of 40 mile-per-hour taper for the eight-foot widening, it looks like the taper would be completed and stay within the head wall that exists on the eastbound lane, which is west of your of your intersection. So we're talking about the taper for the right-hand turn in.
Correct.
So we did look ahead to see if that would impact the the head wall for that stream. It appears that it would not. It may need to adjust the inlets that are there, whether they, if they're B-inlets, they move over a little bit, or if they just convert to E.
Correct.
I think there's something simple can be done there. But I did, and guide rail would definitely, even today, I think the guide rail is warranted based on the distance to the head wall. But as I understand, you'll be willing to put the guide rail in.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, and if the, because I think the taper can work, I just can't speak to the utility pole situation.
Yeah. And again, Mr. Chairman, without additional survey work out there, and obviously, I think we mentioned it earlier, I think you might have mentioned it, obviously, we're not going to finish tonight. We could take a look at that between tonight and next meeting, and just get some idea if they're 10 feet off the edge of pavement or 12 feet, and see what works and what doesn't work, and come back with an answer on that. But we're willing to, you know, work with the engineer and the township to provide that the safe accommodation for our frontage.
Okay.
If we can limit the the widening to our side of the frontage, would that, the shoulder on the opposite side of the road, would, my interpretation is facilitate someone driving around, someone waiting to make a turn into the site? Okay. So I think that if that's the intent, the the volume that's going into the site and the volume on on Camplain Road are both extremely minor, and I think the occurrence of someone waiting for multiple cars to pass to enter the site would be very uncommon. So just some, some numbers to back that up. The the critical headway for a left turn from a major street into a driveway is 4.1 seconds, meaning that there needs to be a 4.1-second gap in traffic for that that vehicle on Camplain Road to enter the site. Now, there's 321 opposing vehicles during the busiest peak hour of the day. So that's one car every approximately 11.2 seconds. So that's just some raw numbers to back up that it's, there essentially will be very few, if any occurrences of of any queuing building up for someone waiting to enter the site due to the low-traffic generation of the site and the low-traffic volume on Camplain Road. Obviously, the, you know, in our traffic study, we do acknowledge that it's, you know, level surface A, but I wanted to expand on that and just put some raw numbers to that.
I greatly appreciate your numbers. I mean, I, if I have to, I could have our traffic department take a harder look at this. And but one of the things that's important to note, and I think we all experience is that, is life isn't just averages. So even though it may average out that there's 11 seconds or whatever you're reporting, there are going to be occurrences when that doesn't, isn't provided. We're looking at the long-term safety of the residents going past this and entering the site, and we think this minor little bit of cartway adjustments is more than justified for the ultimate safety of the the roadway.
Understood. I think I think we've previously indicated that, you know, we'll work together on that. So we'll we'll strive to do that.
Thank you.
All right. We we've entered into the overtime realm. So I let it go past, as I call it. We had stoppage time. Any soccer fans out there?
We only have one more witness, actually.
Ms. Caphone is used to spending the night with us and going home and coming back. So this is, this is not uncharted territory for you, for her, but but we have to open up to the public for questions before we would even get there.
Can we open up to the public and finish with?
Well, we, it's going to wind up coming back, I think, for some of the follow-up, right? So.
Mr. Chairman?
All right. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Related to the next hearing, I'd like to make a suggestion. It's rather unique for the township, but Ms. Elgart and her clients have to be agreeable as well. Though we have a semi-full schedule next Thursday in terms of the number of applications, I don't think there are any of them going to take all night. So if she's willing to come and intersperse herself in between the two Homestead 303 Amwell, the G&amp;J Steel Tubing, and the county's appearance at 9:00, she can come back next Tuesday, next Thursday without notice. She probably won't get the rest of the testimony in or the public, but we'll at least move the process along. If Ms. Caphone, who is only spending half her life here.
Yes. I wish, I'd like to come back next Thursday.
Okay. So I thought, well, you could finish your, if your traffic engineer's testimony at least.
But will you have a chance to analyze the discussion that we just had?
Survey work?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So is your traffic engineer available next Thursday?
I am.
We can continue at least to finish that up. And then the next question is, when on our schedule, more importantly, when on Ms. Caphone's schedule, are we available?
Now, now you have the right idea.
Because she's, you know, she's coming here for other people at other times.
I am. You're not. I can't have her. I just lie in.
Well, she has, and the last time we asked her to accommodate, she refused to allow us to join her on her trip to Europe. So therefore, we're going to have to deal with it here. Mr. Coys, correct me if I'm wrong, going forward, since we are, our calendars are somewhat booked.
Is it June, June 6th, I think, is the next one, and then the next one after that is June 13th. So I don't know what the availability is, but.
Ms. Caphone?
So I'm due to land at 3:50 on June 13th. So assuming my plane's on time, I can be here. I'm not sure if Jack wants to come yet to get me if my plane's running late. So I don't know about that.
Yeah, but the question is, he promised that whole night.
I am.
Okay. Yeah, it just, no, no.
You want, you want, you want to roll the dice?
Yeah. I mean, if, as long as the boards can appreciate the fact that we might have to carry it, but then sure, absolutely.
We have two, well, we have two applications on for the night of the 13th.
Oh, okay.
One, let me, one is basically a request for an extinction on a minor. The other one is coming in for their first. We could probably, I'm not, I'll speak on behalf, give you the last hour.
So starting at 9:00?
Starting at 9:00. We would notice for 7:00, and by that point, hopefully, Ms. Caphone, jet lagged and all.
But still the best.
Still, still Ms. Caphone.
But still in top shape, of course.
Well, this is.
On the 13th.
All right. And, you know, we'll talk for June 13th, and then we'll see where we are at that point.
Okay, fair enough. And then, I'm sorry, May 9th, you said, at what time, between two applications or after?
We've got application. My point is, I would suggest being here, I would suggest being here at 7:00, because if the first application doesn't take long, we can squeeze you in at that point, get you in and out and move on, or at least after.
The second, okay.
One, one last item. We need an extinction on time of decision.
Well, okay.
Well, or we, or we can turn you down tonight.
Well, all right.
You can add that to the ongoing other stuff going on.
No, no, we're good.
I'm assuming you're going to be attending the meetings going forward.
We'll have to see.
I would suggest.
If you're blessed with my presence.
I would suggest to Mr. Allaback and his, and the client, that we're having changing attorneys in midstream, as charming as your boss is, it might make sense. I'm sure he'd be thrilled too not to have to come.
We'll, we'll, we'll play it by ear. How's that? It's going to be a surprise. Keep everybody on their toes.
Eric, one question for Eric. In the event that our jet setter has complications, what would be the next date after June 13th, just out of curiosity?
Well, strangely enough, the next application after that, she's here for somebody else. Here, here for Homestead.
I'm sure she can make that one.
Well, I don't know how long she's going to be on with that one. That's our favorite warehouse application.
When's that? July?
That's in July, because we were accommodating your schedule.
It's an hour. You're on the 13th.
Yeah, July, July 11.
Understand that the next application therein is currently scheduled with one applicant, and there's witness number one. So we'll work it out. We'll see where we are.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Time of decision, my dear?
It's already.
and there's witness number one. So we'll work it out. We'll see where we are.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Time of decision, my dear?
It's already signed.
Till when, for the purpose of the record?
June 13th.
That's certain you're going to get it done. Okay. All right, I think I think we'll have that conversation on June 13th because you're also asking for waiver issues that I think need to be addressed. And Mr. Coys and Mr. Mayhew, I think, have been holding off some of their comments until the end of the testimony, from my gathering.
Correct. My report also hasn't been addressed, so. I'm just the planner.
I'm assuming that's Ms. Cofone.
Correct.
All right. Mr. Chairman, this is a motion to carry this application to May 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, as well as Thursday, June 13th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, without further notice, and an extinction of the time of decision to June 13th.
Okay, so just for the residents that are here, you're not getting another notice. So hopefully you made note of the dates.
It will also be on the website.
Well, it'll be on the website, right? Okay, so may I have a motion for the extension? Okay, Mr. Scoville sneaks in last and jumping. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Brightelli?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Benjamin Lefonti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chikameli?
Yes.
Mike Chikpezen?
Yes.
Chair Thurla?
Yes. Okay, and as everybody knows on the planning board, we have a meeting next week.
With multiple applications.
That's right. Very funny. So with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.